A number of public hearings to get through the public into the regular council meetings. So I'm going to start this evening's lineup for the record. First, I need to mention this evening is a public hearing, a series of public hearings. For the record, this evening is supposed to commence at six thirty. Today's date is Tuesday, February twenty first, twenty twenty three. We have council members participating in person and via Zoom. In person, this evening we have Councilman Walker, Councilwoman Turner, Councilman Netea, Councilwoman Riewett, Councilman Cavanaro, and via Zoom, and we have Councilman Oliver. So we have our forum, and before we open the meetings, could you please stand and press the button? All right, I'd like to call to order the first public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding a new ordinance, Chapter one eighty one entitled Trees, Shrubs, and Woody Vegetation. Before we open up for comments, City Clerk Carolyn Anderson, can you read the public comments?
Thank you. Notice to your regimen that the Board of Councilmen in the City of Torrington will hold two public hearings on Tuesday, February twenty first, twenty twenty three, starting at six thirty P M. in the City Hall Auditorium at one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to solicit public comment regarding proposed changes to the city's code of ordinances. A new chapter, one eighty one, is proposed entitled Trees, Shrubs, and Woody Vegetation, and changes are proposed to Chapter one ninety four, Vehicles and Traffic. The full texts of the proposed ordinances and the proposed changes are available to the public online or in the office of the city clerk. The public may attend in person or by Zoom. In-person attendees will be granted up to three minutes to comment. Virtual attendees may submit their comments in writing to the city clerk before four P M. on Tuesday, February twenty first, twenty twenty three. Written comments may be sent by email to the city underscore clerk at torringtonct.org or by mail to one forty Main Street, Torrington. Written comments will be forwarded to the Board of Councilmen in advance of the public hearing. Instructions for participating by phone or online are available at www dot torringtonct dot org slash Zoom. All interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. David at Torrington, Connecticut, this fourteenth day of February, twenty twenty three. Carolyn Anderson, sue good.
Thank you. Right, so as I said, the first public hearing is for ordinance, Chapter one eighty one, Trees, Shrubs, and Woody Vegetation. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the board regarding this ordinance, Chapter one eighty one, Trees, Shrubs, and Woody Vegetation?
Tom Condever, eighteen twenty one, Winston Road. There's a lot to like in this ordinance, but for the benefit of brevity, I'm just going to jump right into my two concerns. To paraphrase, section one eighty one dash six, C four, at the board's discretion, city funds can be expended to plant and maintain trees on private property located within ten feet of public roads or grounds. First given is worthy to me of shading and beautification. But I believe clarification is needed on this. You may need to add some other criteria that you might use to when this provision would be implemented. Like, you know, how extensively is this going to be done throughout the city? Are there specific areas in the city where this would be, people have in mind of doing it, in doing this? How is this going to be tracked? You know, properties change hands, city staff, there's turnover there. And so, you know, get to a situation where nobody knows, you know, who owns that tree? And then possibly there might be some liability issues. So that's my first one. Now, my second concern is it involves the public nuisance provision. You give a definition which basically states that there is a negative, there is a negative impact on the public, either health or safety or property value that could occur. Then, in, let's see, in the purpose, section one eighty one dash one, it states that the, one of the purposes of this whole ordinance is to protect people in Torrington from personal injury and also property damage due to trees. And specifically states located on city property. So then the main, the main section is one eighty one fifteen, talks about hazardous trees. The, so, I think there may be a need to specify something about trees located on private property that could present a risk to city property. The, like, in the section here, the section one eighty one, one eighty one dash fifteen is, you know, the nuisance thing seems, where it talks about the public health and safety risks and also decreased value of people's properties. But it doesn't, in that section, doesn't really say specifically if this just pertains to city property or it could impact private property. What I'm going to, what I'd like to say is that we, we already have a, an ordinance on the books with, which does allow the city to call a nuisance when, on a private property. And that occurs in the street and sidewalks, Article seven, visibility at intersections, that allows the Chief of Police to drop the nuisance flag and issue an order to the corner property owner to remove obstructions that could be either like a fence or maybe more typically vegetation that's greater than three feet in height and within ten feet of the corner. So that's kind of like what I'm talking about is that there's a whole procedure built in there where there's a problem with private property that has an impact on public. So, so what I'm saying is that in the case of, say, let me give you just a couple of examples. Say there's some trees that's on private property next to a playground or next to a greenway and, you know, they're obviously hazardous. So I think that's, that's where I would think the Director of Public Works can can call the public nuisance. And so that's it, I'm going to just conclude right there.
Thank you, Mr. Condever, I very appreciate your comments. So calling again with regard to the public hearing on Trees, Shrubs, and Woody Vegetation. If you could state your name for the record, please.
All right, Blackman, seventy two W F. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. As an arborist, and I just want to clarify, my license needs to be updated. So no one is unclear about that. I have been a practicing arborist for the past several years. My license needs to be renewed now. Well, arbor culture has been my lifeblood and my staple career for the past twenty-two years. I started collecting a paycheck doing tree work when I was twenty-one years old. And aside from a few short stints with other things here and there, this has been my primary practice. I agree with the vast majority of what's in here and absolutely with what Thomas had to say about the nuisance trees on private property affecting public property, how we mitigate that responsibility between a homeowner and the town. One of the things I'd like to address here is the responsibility and the position of the tree warden. I believe that should be an independent role and not also as Director of Public Works. I believe there's too much of a conflict of interest there. It feels as though someone is going to be looking out for the betterment and well-being of the environment of conservation, reclamation in any way. That should be a specific job and title for one person to take care of. The deputy tree marshal, tree warden would also follow suit in the same line. But to have someone with a dual duty in that regard, the pertinence and the paramount attitude that someone needs to have towards public safety and taking care of our trees, shrubs, woody ornamentals, that should be a job independent for one person alone. The Director of Public Works has enough to deal with in keeping the physical plant of this town running up to snuff without also needing to worry about the entire limitless universe of the arboricultural world. That's something that can consume one's time, day in and out, full-time, all year. And I can just say I know from experience. So to look at those couple of things there, having the tree ward be an independent position for someone that can commit full-time responsibility to our public safety around parks, public thoroughfares, exactly as Tom was saying. You know, when we look at playgrounds, co-park, everything else that has been a part of our lives for so long, to parcel that out and to have the Director of Public Works also need to have the additional responsibility of the tree warden, I believe is an unfair ask. So I'd like to ask you all to take a look at that as an independent position. And then the other thing that I'd like to bring up today is the number of historical trees that are in our town that could oftentimes be overlooked and taking care of, you know, our world in our arbor culture, in the entire premise of plant healthcare, when it comes to the historical trees that we've got around town and what happens when they need to be pruned, cabled, fertilized, and then ultimately when they meet their age cap and their full demise and those trees need to be removed, where does that wood go? Does it get sent through a chipper, turned into bark mulch? Or can it be reclaimed and reused for local artists and artisans such as myself? And I'm not saying this to put myself up in any position unfairly. It's because that's the adjunct, the ancillary benefit to my career as an arborist has been as an artist and my primary means was wood art. I'm not alone. There is an entire community of artists here in this town that could benefit from the timber that comes off of these public works projects where trees are removed or pruned. And there's really nothing, no item in that category that's too big or too small. Everything down to my wooden feather earrings that I wear. I made these as part of my reclaimed scrap before it hits the wood stove or the compost pile. So there is an entire world that can be brought to the life and livelihood of our town through the arboricultural industry. Most of this is excellent. I agree with a great deal of it. I would say not to shoulder anyone with an unfair responsibility. That job position and title should be looked at for someone who's willing to shoulder that on their own. And then, of course, to reinforce what Thomas said, there are a lot of areas on private land that can have an overhanging potential risk to public property. And that's the secondary, it's personal risk of injury to any individual that we really need to be taking a look at first and foremost. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blackman. Still public hearing open, and Trees, Shrubs, and Woody Vegetation. All right, because the public hearing, you do have to call for this three times. Is there anyone else on the public wishing to address the board regarding Chapter one eighty one, Trees, Shrubs, and Woody Vegetation? Final call for public comment, Chapter one eighty one, Trees, Shrubs, and Woody Vegetation. It's saying here none, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. Declare the public hearing closed, this public hearing is closed. So we'll move right into the second public hearing for this evening. This is, the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding proposed changes to Chapter one ninety four, Vehicles and Traffic. The public notice has already been written to the board. So we can move right into the portion of the hearing where the public can address the board. So I'll open this up, and if there's anyone from the public wishing to address the board regarding Chapter one ninety four, Vehicles and Traffic. If you could just step to the microphone and state your name. And then to remind everyone of the three minutes warning.
My name is Dan Chini, our side, one nineteen Kenny Street. And I would first like to thank the members of the board for permitting me the opportunity of speaking this evening. I will, I'm going to be speaking in favor of approving and passing this ordinance. And I've outlined my comments in several pages before. I really don't want to go over them, you can read that at your own time. And the significance of it is, I've been there for forty years. Basically, I've had no problems, there have been no problems with commercial vehicles parking on that until, I would say about a year ago, nine months ago. And all of a sudden, we went from basically zero commercial vehicles to multi-commercial vehicles, whether they were trailers, cabs, transporters. And over a period of time, you, there was no pattern. You would see on weekends, maybe three, four, five, or six there for short periods of time or three or four days. During the week, you'd see similar occasions where you'd have vehicles out there. Couple of times, there were as many as seven trailer tractors, smaller vehicles, commercial vehicles like the Penn Speed type rentals. And there were as many as seven in twenty-four hours. The pattern was, there was no pattern, there was no specific time. But what it would do at times was, it would interfere with traffic. But the most important aspect of it was, it affected the aesthetics of the street. You know, we were concerned and we were seeing a process that in three to six months, I would say, no, from six weeks to twelve weeks, it went from zero trucks or one truck down there to, you know, seven or eight on or off during the course of, sometimes I wouldn't say a day, but a few days. And there was no pattern to it. It was turning into what we felt was a commercial truck stop for commercial vehicles. And we wanted to avoid that and keep the aesthetics of the neighborhood intact. And it's outlined in there. And at first, we approached the police department and they tried to cooperate, but the simple responses, they really didn't have any authority to do anything other than remove derailing trucks or something that was on stands detached from another car, I mean, a truck or a vehicle. And so that left them powerless. And so what we did, we approached the city. And this is the response that has been drawn up and is being submitted for approval. And it's a good and sound ordinance. And it's not only effective for us, but this will protect every street in the City of Torrington so that you don't have these trailer tractor owners and drivers of trailer tractors that just arbitrarily see a nice place to park and they can take advantage of it. They're using it for their own personal gain and it affects somebody else's neighborhood. And this would restrict it and I think it doesn't have any unreasonable restrictions on it. Other than that, and one thing that I did notice in our specific case, we had security issues because I, one night I noticed, and it just stuck in my mind, that there was two vehicles, they were carriers of automobiles and they were packed front end, so the first vehicle was here, carrier, the second one was here. And there was a third truck, I don't know if it belonged to that same individual or somebody else. But it blocked any cars from being taken off. And I looked at it and it's strange and I didn't understand it. So about a week later, and I realized what the guy was doing was he was protecting his vehicles there from theft. And I said, he's concerned about theft. And I said, if somebody decides they're going to come up here and try and take those vehicles, we have twenty-two vehicles on our property. If they can't get those, ours are more vulnerable. So it's like a magnet. So if somebody decided that they saw a trailer with vehicles, they might take advantage when they couldn't try one of ours. So it increased the risk of theft on our property. And there were other concerns, but for the most part, satisfied with what's been done. And I hope that it is okay.
Thanks, Mr. Blackman.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening.
All right, so this public hearing regarding Chapter one ninety four, Vehicles and Traffic is still open. Anybody else from the public wishing to address the board regarding this, the adoption of this ordinance?
I had no idea it was going to be this kind of meeting. Again, P R. Blackman, seventy-two W F. My brief summarization is this, adding any additional bans right now to Congress in Torrington doesn't help our town. If there are issues in a private matter that you need to take up with your neighbor, have a good conversation with your neighbor. The guys over here that put their lives on the line every day, men and women that will go out and write tickets if they need to. I know they're not looking for any extra work between the hours of nine at night and six in the morning. However, that is their job, is to uphold our public safety. So if we're not capable of having good, decent conversations with our neighbors to ask them what's going on with the traffic on our streets, then I believe we need to take an internal look and reevaluate what we've got going on personally. This shouldn't be a public issue from nine P M. to six in the morning. There are a lot of people now, in particular since the pandemic, where our work schedules have gotten turned upside down, inside out. And the amount of small, large truck travel and commerce that's being done with small box trucks, smaller trailers that are not quite the C D L, ten thousand pound limit, that traffic has increased substantially. And if we're putting any additional bans on commerce right now in Torrington, it could be detrimentally and negatively impacting way more people and this could help. So, thank you.
I think there was one more signed up for this into the room. All right. Still open to the public, anyone else wishing to address the board regarding the adoption of Chapter one eighty four, Vehicles and Traffic?
General Pippo, one nineteen Kenny Street. As I said to you mayor before, there's two types of truck drivers. Okay, there's truck drivers that drive the proper equipment, safety equipment. I was a truck driver for thirty years, so I know the field. And then there's the other ones, the ones that are out there with the illegal equipment, ball tires, no mud flaps, smashed fuel tanks, battered battery boxes. These trucks that are parking on our city streets, they're looking out for their behalf, but they're not truck drivers. Okay, I see the vehicles that they're driving. Okay, they've been thrown out, thrown out of every private property, no matter if it's Lowe's, Home Depot, downtown shopping center, many more. Everybody posted signs, no overnight tractor trailer car. The reason why they did that is because they abused the privilege. They were littering, they were dumping, they were, they were breaking light poles up at Lowe's. I know personally because the truck driver told me that. He was parked on Kenny Street, I was talking to him. He wasn't one of these guys that are driving the truck that's illegal. He had a beautiful tractor, it was totally legal. He was just trying to find a place to park his truck for one night. And in the conversation, he told me the problem that they're running it. Okay, there's a few that's running it for the, oh. And that little grassy area between Kenny Street and Route eight. Okay, there's already been a microwave there. That microwave wasn't thrown out by somebody in the neighborhood. It was thrown out of sleep that it didn't work. They were thrown out of Walmart because they filled up three shopping carriages full of garbage. They were thrown out of Lowe's because they broke a light post and they drove away. There was one tractor trailer parked on Kenny Street that the trailer wasn't even registered. It was missing flaps, the tires are bald. I brought Danny down and I called all the violations. Finally, the police department came over, disconnected it, merely towed the trailer away because it wasn't registered. That tractor sat there on that road for four months. It didn't go nowhere, it just sat there. I was feeling like I was living in Bridgeport, Waterville. Okay, if the city's going to allow this, it could go to any neighborhood. Okay, it's King Street, Bonavista right now, or maybe a couple others. Okay, I don't think it's the city's responsibility to have these guys parked on the street. Nobody's going to pick up their trash for them. And it's going to really look terrible after a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Still open to the public regarding Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter one eighty four.
Victor Corsi, Beale Vista, Almiron, Torrington. I have some photos here of tractor trailers parked on Beale Vista. And it's a safety concern throughout the whole city, especially when it's a narrow street. Sergeant Bob was to help me out on a matter here. Can I present this to the council?
Do you have enough papers for all the council members or?
I could just, I could just pass these around and.
Yes, yeah, if you could give it to the city clerk, it shows some of them. Can we return them to you?
Yeah, absolutely. Just Beale Vista, thank you very much. I spoke to you before, Mayor Carmon, and the council, when you invited me to a meeting with the people, the residents on Kenny Street, that's a safety concern. And I don't know why tractor trailers should be in residents' neighborhoods, loaded or unloaded. I know there's a spot down south end of Torrington, by the highway, Route eight, one one eighteen. Maybe they should park there, I don't know if it's big enough for them. I have newly repaved street, thank you. And you would think the traffic would go slower going by these, this tractor trailer. And they don't, they want to get around it as fast as they could. So it's just, it's a safety concern for everybody. You know, I'm in between East Main Street and Torrenford West, it's a cut through. I can't imagine what.
It's a cut through, I can't imagine when the new coffee shop opens up up there and see how that's gonna be, but that's another issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time. We're still open to the public? Anyway, because this is a public hearing, I want to make sure that everybody has an attitude, so their comments, I will call this three times. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board regarding the proposed changes to chapter one ninety-four vehicles and traffic? And the third request, anyone from the public wishing to address the board regarding the changes to chapter one ninety-four vehicles and traffic? Seeing in here are none, I will declare this this public hearing closed. I will declare this public hearing closed, this public hearing closed. Alright, this is where we move into the regular council agenda. And for the record, it is now seven o'clock P M. And I remember one on the agenda this evening is I would call for a motion by a board councilman to adopt the proposed new ordinance, chapter one, page one of the Code of Orders, trees, shrubs, and woody vegetation. Uh, thank you, motion made by councilwoman Rex, do you want to have a second?
Sir.
And second, that councilwoman. Four is open to questions or comments from the board. Yes, councilwoman.
Um, I've got two two main concerns. First one was a part about not being able to attach any notices to any person who fixes to a telephone, electric light pole, power pole, or other utility pole, tree, shroud, rock, or other natural object on city-owned property could have to pay a fine. And when I understand not fixing playbills and notices to trees, but I'm not, I'm trying to not make things more difficult for the residents of our town and just thinking about somebody who wants to mow a lawn, someone who hasn't lost a pet, someone who has a tag sale coming up, and a telephone pole. I mean, it was once a tree, but I mean, so was the tag sale notice, so I I just don't really understand why we want to have that restriction. And furthermore, I'm a little concerned about the enforcement of that, and there we go, like, find the phone numbers, unload flyers, and call those people up and find them, what? I'm I'm just not sure, I have a question, but it's definitely a concern why we have that that piece in there and why it's important.
Yeah, um, Mr. Drew, do you want to attempt to answer that question?
Well, you know, I'm just really interested, that ordinance committee, chair of the ordinance committee, has a view of this, a cur iteration of of draft, they support coming to a public hearing. So we still hope it's a different comment and the behavior, well, it's been worked in our it worked, everything is. But I do appreciate, actually, this is a new ordinance unlike the other ordinance we're amending. And we had a lot of conversation about it, so I give you another one.
Can you, what section were you referring to?
Yes, it is one eighty-one dash eleven C.
B?
C, like cat.
Oh, C, okay. Well, I mean, I I think part of that is to maintain the aesthetics of the community. Posting those, now we've all seen the telephone poles that have a million staples and nails and and people posting it on trees, it's a thing, it's it's it really comes down to trying to ensure the aesthetic pleasingness of the community and not having these bills and flyers and and dates posted. There are many ways that people can get their their postings or messages to be without attaching them to trees or other public structures, telephone poles such as that. So that is kind of the the image is behind a no fixing of flyers or bills to trees.
I'm sorry, councilwoman.
Well, we now address the duty directly here in this moment.
Yes, yeah, this is good.
Is there, there's a provision, right, for if people want to do that, they have to get permission through your department or?
You have to get permission, right, for posting.
Okay, so here's my concern, which, you know, actually fails with councilwoman. I understand, you know, there used to be some controls, clearly here it does, but on the other hand, there's trees that are wanting, but you know, telephone poles, that kind of stuff, there's something to me. It's much to do about nothing, but, you know, it doesn't need to be considered. I just think, I would like to be, I would like young people, okay, who are doing things around town, okay, and whatever this pop-up culture is that they have where and they don't necessarily have the means, the connections, or the money to go through the Republican American, pay out advertisements or get radio, and they're gonna be putting on something, you know, some some activities that they're doing around town. Music, art, whatever it is, you know. I love the idea, I do like the idea that they can just pull and put up posters, I I mean, I I've lived in, I've lived in cities, you know, before coming back to Torrington and, you know, one of the most attractive thing for younger people is to be able to do that kind of stuff. There's a vibrancy to it and and our town needs that vibrancy. Look around this room. I mean, you know, everybody's, you know, the middle-aged are always knocking on the armpit doors, you know. My gosh. I mean, look, you know, we we talk about doing things for young people, young people's need this because they don't have the means, that's you know, we fortunate older people, so I don't want, I don't want to clamp down on that part, it's early on, early on. And and if and if there needs to be an approval process, this written stuff is both is wrong. I I would just say make it so that they can text you or email your department with a photo of what they want to put up and then it behooves, I would make this caveat to that, it would behooves your of your office to take on this responsibility that these people should get a response within seventy-two hours. Again, these people are moving quickly, they're throwing stuff together and they want to get people there for whatever they want to do. And if they don't get you a response from your department within, I'm just throwing out seventy-two hours or something quickly, then they have permission. So the onus is on the Torrington, on your department to approve or disapprove, so they can get going with whatever it is you're doing, you know, and and so that's why my, how I would revise this.
And do you think, I I I tend to agree on the vibrancy of the community, and I'm I'm not talking about trees, I'm okay with not posting things on the streets. And I think I would consider something like, you know, after several weeks, that you're, there is a responsibility for people to take it down, although again, I am concerned about enforcement. But I think when you drive through a community and you do see telephone poles or light poles with stuff going on, I think it does sort of make us look a little more like we've got stuff going on.
Exactly.
I like that.
It's a whole intent. I think, again, no, it's really to protect our trees, so I mean, we did add this section, telephone poles. Maybe there is a way you can amend that out, amend it.
Let's try to buy yourself a cigarette.
What I'd like to recommend also is to not pass this ordinance, this continue received some, you know, positive, negative comments, mostly positive comments about tree ordinance for us to move forward and considering other amendments. So there, I'd like to withdraw my motion to pass this ordinance to table it for.
Don't, or just table, table, I turn the motion to table, right, sorry. Alright, I have a motion and a second to table, all in favor? Anybody?
Yeah, yeah. I do, but I I can hold on to the other day, but I think about the talks.
Oh, yeah, the motion is on the table. Have you ordered one, have you asked the chairman when we have time, do you mind? Alright. Return this, we got that motion to table, any more yet?
On this one?
No, let's wait, let me ask, do you have comments?
No, man.
Whatever you call it, alright, we're gonna move into items. Again, I'll run just a motion by board councilman to adopt a proposed change to chapter one ninety-four, the code of ordinances, vehicles and traffic. Um, yeah, sorry, hold on. I need, so section one ninety-four, I want to stick to the motion. Section one ninety-four dash three point one restricted parking on residential streets. One ninety-four dash sixty, plenty for fences. And one ninety-four twenty-four, authority to remove penalties and extensions. Um, thank you. Move right, councilwoman, uh, we're like second to the councilwoman, can I hear? Yes, please.
Again, this was another, as we, you know, bring up ordinance, it's just out of the blue. The voice of the community is really important, so your concerns, complaints, whatever they might be, are certainly listened to by our, by our police department or by any other of our public departments. And in this case, I want to, I want to credit, I did, but Sergeant Boltis for bringing this before the ordinance committee for consideration and amendment. And it isn't really intended just for these few streets, it is intended to ensure that we have some rules that look like every street in Torrington, but your voice was heard. Appreciate the comments that were needed tonight, the photos, so.
Thank you. For those open for the councilor questions? Yes, councilwoman.
I had wondered where this had originally come from, so now I can clearly see where the problem came from, and this is definitely something that I think we need to address. But I actually have made similar notes to what Mr. Blackman had brought up and spoken with my husband, it was like breaking out a puzzle later today to try to figure out, you know, what is the average work van fitted to, what if it has a ladder on it? A kind of quad cab truck would be twenty plus seven five feet, so that had a combination plate, I think, under this ordinance that we declared to park on the street. Maybe is it not already one, park on the street? That's what I'm trying to kind of follow the changes. Because I don't want small business owners who that are out in the summertime that are doing doing work and maybe can't fit their work vehicle in their truck all year, in their driveway all year round. I don't necessarily want to exclude them from being able to park by their homes. I don't, maybe I'm missing it, it just will map for me.
Mr. Councilman, can I hear?
Yeah, along with that, I think we clearly need this, and pictures were a thousand words, there was like about nine pictures, oh, nine thousand words, and the problem was very clear in heaven. How, I think they're there in the city council, so thank you for doing that. And to the gentleman who was the board's secretary, able to talk to the city. We weren't aware, we're aware now, it's not excused, and I've been something in place to register this, clearly with that. To Ms. Homer's concern, does this, the way it's written up, I'm not sure, the chief or whoever, does this give you the authority, this discriminatory authority to be able to say, yes, this is a local business person, what they manage, that has the right to be here, this is something else? Does this ordinance as written do that for you?
Okay, the program is most knowledgeable on this one, Keith comes out. So I'll speak on behalf of the chief. In regards to the ordinance, the ordinance was trying to regulate, not deter commerce, again, we're not deterring people to come into Torrington. We're not trying to deter truckers that are important to our commerce, that's not the intention whatsoever. Especially when it comes to this, it's more or less the people that park and are bedding down for three or four days, but don't live anywhere near the streets that they're parking on. And a lot of these things that are being dropped off, car transports and such, they may not be lending any commerce to Torrington. Again, I don't know, some of them do, some of them are fly-by-nights that go on an app and pick up product and then move it elsewhere. Again, I I understand that there is a lot of time for people to go to sleep and that have to bed down. It's not trying to deter the local or smaller business that do live in town. If it is a commercial plate, that's when it starts to become a restriction. If it's a combination plate, that's different because you're a mixture of residential use and or passenger use and commercial use. That's the intention here is that when it's strictly being used for a commercial purpose, then it should be more regulated, it shouldn't be in a commercial or a residentially zoned area. And that's that's kind of the spirit of this.
So, given the, the way it's written up now, you know the, you're aware of the board draft, this gentleman before?
Yes.
Okay, so if you, if if you had those trucks parked on a given street and you had a guy who's a house manager who's got his stuff on the ladder, parked the same street, this gives you the authority to ticket or or remove those large vans and not touch his?
Correct, is is he listed as a commercial, at least probably in the combination, not strictly a commercial, number one. But again, I can't also, how do I discriminate between who is or isn't parking there because they are staying with family, the cousins for the weekend? So we do have to be cautious, we do try to vet out and find out, is the person here? But we're not gonna just make a snap judgment, normally we're not just gonna turn on a toe just because or start issuing tickets. We try to limit it first, and again, we've been trying that with with Kenny Street, with with one of this and others. We've never really had to address the issue. So we are trying to work with people, listen, if I could tell them a place to go tomorrow and and they know that they have a good spot and still be able to stay close or or local to the home, I I just spoke to a gentleman that was trying to look for something that was staying on Kenny Street. He was issued an overnight pardon, we do the overnight restrictions anyway, asked where we could park, why can't it go into a private property area? But he says, listen, I live on Highland Avenue, I don't have anywhere else to go, you know, the closest spot is Ridgefield or a true truck stop down at Comster or whatever you're lying, where else can I go? I would love to give him an option, I should have. So he had to find, so far, a different Kenny Street, the people from Buena Vista have all found places with the restrictions. So it's obviously, it's possible, it's just choosing what's convenient versus what's not, and putting a little regulation, and it's a bad.
Alright, and you, the way this thing is being progressed, is this the best best attempt so far to be able to do that?
Correct, by putting too much restriction, which again, the the subcommittee I gave credit to, they looked at it and and looked at specific pieces to it to reduce some of the classifications, because we had a list of classifications. We didn't want to limit it to just one, you know, if you drive a delivery vehicle, well, then you can't park there, you have an a portion. So we wanted to leave it a little more broad for that availability for discretion.
Okay.
And I know what's online right now still includes, you know, some of those vehicles, which we will take out.
Yeah, I don't know why it was on that online, because the most recent one I got showed it was updated.
Yes, we need to make sure that those are all passed out.
Yeah, the appendix A should have been moved, correct?
Okay, because that's why I put.
Yes, and that's why it's not.
Yeah, so.
Correct, and those recent ones should only be a single page, the appendix A should be out.
It's hard. Yes, as I mentioned, it's a lot of section. It is, you know, it is crossed out, so it's huge and long, and the motion to.
For the minutes, we've just gave this correct.
To take out those.
So this schedule of the attachment is removed.
The rule has modified, but I don't really remember. That that should only be passed in the full text first, the first iteration.
So there were two attachments, there were, okay.
The one with no full sense.
So there was the the version that was for adoption, and then the one behind it was the reactive version, or red line version.
They're really only going page one, so they're all black page ones, yes.
For the minutes, I'll be on, I'll identify that.
That we are approving section one ninety-four dash three point one, the first page. So we've done show, another issue of working committee, trying to reduce the identification of any vehicles, so. So with that.
I second.
There's no question. Uh, yeah, roll call, but I'm just checking to see if there are any questions or comments, just before I call. And it is roll call. Same in here, no additional questions from the board. I'll call this motion, that councilman Oliver?
Aye.
Councilman Warren?
Yes.
Councilman, councilwoman Warren?
Aye.
Councilman McGee.
Yes.
Councilwoman, correct, yes, Councilman Cannon.
Yes.
Right. Motion passes, um, and, um, it's up to the city court to do what they have to do with qualifications. Thank you. All right, I am free on the agenda. Those members of the public who are occasionally meeting, I'll interclaim the motion of the meeting of the public in accordance with section four subsection meeting of the city council under the UCA meeting rules of procedure.
Cool.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warren. Second, and second by Councilman Oliver.
Aye.
Oh, okay, this is a part of the council meeting where the general public discuss or bring comments to the board. They don't have to be connected to the ordinance. So anybody have other public questions or requests for this meeting? Yes, please. And I appreciate your contributions.
Kathy Ross, one ten Horace Street. I'd like to voice my support in favor of the Red Mountain, uh, recreational grant, uh, trails grant application. And I'd like to just stress two points. The first is how much time and effort has already been put into the purchase of this property, um, for the purpose of a trail. Um, early in two thousand thirteen, city council approved the city's grant application to purchase this abandoned rail bed. Um, and it, they used funds from the recreational trails grant at that point to, for the purpose of a recreational trail. So I really want to stress that. Uh, it took a long time, two thousand fifteen, the deep grant was awarded, but because it was a abandoned rail bed, it had to go through the federal highway administration, we approved, then had to go back to the state of Connecticut for first drive refusal. Then because of the time lapsed, they made us get another appraisal, made the city get another appraisal. So it wasn't until spring of two thousand nineteen that this purchase was able to be done after a lot of work, effort and investment by the city. Um, the second thing I'd like to stress is that, um, I know there was a comment made, uh, two weeks ago that people weren't informed and there has been a number of public presentations. Um, going back to two thousand and eleven, uh, it's been in the press, it's been in the newspapers, Torrington Register, um, Waterbury Republican and city's website. So, uh, July two thousand thirteen, there was a presentation, January two thousand fifteen, October two thousand fifteen, October two thousand seventeen, February two thousand nineteen, and just last Thursday, uh, February two thousand twenty-three, Torrington Trails Network had an informational meeting. Um, I just want to say that there has been a lot of publicity, people should know about it. Um, and Mark Lanahan will address, um, you on what the outcome of that informational meeting was. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you. Mark Lanahan, twenty-three thirty-five Metro Road, Torrington. Um, and I am here with the Torrington Trails Network. And I'd like to give you a sense of the support that we have received on behalf of this grant proposal. We have received so much positive support about the grant, about the trails and about our city. As part of our outreach, we had a public meeting at Bad Dog Brewery last Thursday evening. That was terrific. Lots of great feedback, very well attended. And at that meeting, we offered the attendees a short support form that they could sign. We received, have received ninety-eight of those forms in support of this, uh, grant proposal. And if I could just real quick, ninety-eight, I won't read you ninety-eight, but if I could just read a few. I grew up on Red Mountain, walked the Red Mountain, uh, the railroad as a child and would love to see this happen. Looking forward to the addition of this property to the trail network. A healthy community is a key to attracting young families in Torrington. You have my full support. I am a hundred, hundred percent behind them and the city's efforts to bring this work to fruition. There is only good to be gained by this project. Trails for all residents make for a strong, connected, connected, vibrant city. Go Torrington. Let's do a good thing. And to finish up, um, a, a point that was made very briefly, hell yeah. We also solicited more formal letters of support from local politicians, businesses, community members. We have received and been promised twenty-one letters with more possibly to arrive. Everyone that we have given them to has been positive and supportive. And that's, that's when this gets to be fun for a volunteer to go out and hand letters to people and get so much positive response. People who really like the things that are going on in Torrington and this being one of them. And I would like to just mention two places since they've been brought up before. Of, of those twenty-one letters, there are two places that have signed letters of support. One is Planet Fitness. Uh, and part of me, these two places are right on that Red Mountain route. One is Planet Fitness, right in front of the Bose Trail. And why they would not sign a letter of support for a trail, uh, is beyond me, if not for, just for marketing purposes for them alone. For Warranton-Woolenville, it has a hundred and twenty-four units. And when we dropped off the letter, they were very, very positive. They said their advisory council had to meet, which they did on the fourteenth. They did invite indeed, uh, vote and wrote a letter of support. And so for emphasis, because Warranton has come up before, two weeks ago, the Warranton-Woolenville condo association supports the Red Mountain Trail project that will run right behind them. Ten years ago, I had stopped by to get their support, same, same thing. They thought that a trail behind them would be, would be a great, uh, attractiveness for, for their condo project. So thank you very much for your time. Hope this gives you some sense of the kind and the degree of support that we have heard from the community.
I'm Martin, who got, uh, two forty eighth Frederick Street. Uh, I, I am a member of the Torrington Trails Network. I want to speak out at half of that, of that, uh, Red Mountain Trail. Uh, it's, it's incredible addition to Torrington, if you can bring it to fruition. Um, I, and I heard one person from the Red Mountain area express some concern about what happens if property values are going to go down. And public safety issues. Assistant presenter, uh, the safety issue, walking these trails. I'm eighty years old, I've been biking and hiking my whole life. I'm still biking and hiking and I've been on a lot of trails, all through Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts and New York. And I say that because it's, just to let you know that I've seen a lot of trails. And the history that I have seen is that two things happen when you build trails. One, property values go up because people love being around a place where they can go out and have, get, get outdoors. Two, crime goes down. People who are intent on breaking the law like to operate in the dark, they don't want to be seen. And when you get a bunch of people up on the trail and there's citizens, just like, just like all the rest in the room. When they're out there, one of the things you can make sure they're carrying is a phone. It's a plot problem. You dial nine one one. And then you turn on your video and you make sure that this, you can, you can record what's happening. Effectively, these trails, um, foster a, a neighborhood crime watch. And it, it just keeps everybody safe because you've got eyes on everything. So there's those two concerns, is it, are they going to have property values infected? Yep, they're going up. Crime is gonna go down. I see no reason at all to be able to, uh, to hold back and, and get supportive of this, this trail.
Thank you. Still, I think the comments. Excuse. Uh, all right, uh, a final call for anyone from the public, Mr. Lawrence.
My name is Ryan Royals, uh, I own a parcel of property on thirty-nine Old Winston Road. Now, I know that the grant that's in front of you now is portioned for Red Mountain Avenue, but I do understand from lengthy conversations that the intent is to connect Torrington and Winston. Uh, and I know there are portion of the processes that, uh, that are handed out at the trails meetings all have to do with that connection, with continuing on with the trail and so forth. Um, a lot of the successes that are looked at are looked at on the Sioux Grossman Trail. And if you were to look at that property of the Sioux Grossman Trail, you'll recognize that it doesn't go by many landowners that are private. Super high proportion of that land, uh, if you look at it all the way from where the Sioux Grossman starts to where it ends, there's literally three houses, three individual houses on that property. Um, and of those three, uh, there's very minimal impact in, in someone's words to those zones. Um, the propaganda and so forth that's given out at some of these meetings is, uh, for lack of a better term, incorrect. Um, I saw, uh, there was a study done by, by a company that was hired by the, the city and the trails company. And it, and it gives some indication about the fact that, uh, of use, thirty-nine Old Winston Road or Old Winston Road is not a high traffic area. Well, they haven't really done their homework, because if you're on there on any series of, uh, summertime or, uh, non-winter conditions, you'll see that there's a very high rate of truck traffic on that road. It's an industrial zone property. Um, my biggest fear is this, I don't have an issue, uh, with trails that are existing trails, trails that are owned by the city of Torrington, uh, trails, trails that are being improved. But I question whether or not, um, all of the landowners, uh, the first person that got up, so this is, oh, everyone has been identified and everyone's, there's not one time that I was ever asked, uh, there's a quality picture where someone had to come onto my property to take a picture down the sewer line. And it's part of their proposals about, oh, this is a great spot to put it. No one asked me. No one ever asked me, you can see that they had to come onto my property to survey it. They had to come onto my property to take the pictures. Uh, we did walk several years ago, we walked the property with, with a group of people and I expressed my concerns at that time. I said that, you know, this is not necessarily the ideal spot. Uh, the Sioux Grossman thing is very visible and the gentleman's right, when it's visible and, uh, the people are on that, I think that's part of the fun for them, that it is visible, they can see themselves. And it's, it's high visibility and far as I'm concerned, it does look me for a low crime rate. But there are sections of these, of these proposed areas that are not going to be visible. They're not going to be available to police officers and so forth right away. They're not well lit. And my fear is that at one time, the trails that are here and you've spent lots of money on and the trail that's here that you've spent lots of money on, you're going to force it down some of the people's throats that aren't so keen on being there. I'm not against the trails in hogged state forests, I think it's a great idea where it, where it does end in Sioux Grossman and it goes up through, because those trails are state forests. But when you start to ask people to, you know, have people in front of their house on a regular basis, all, uh, dogs going onto your property, I see it, is it going to be that quality for all of the individuals in, involved? Uh, some people like or pay well to have a portion of property that is away from one of everyone else's or that is separated. And now you are going to ask them to, to change that. Some people like living on a dead end road. Now it's, it's going to be full of, of traffic. And it sounds like I'm that, not my backyard person, I'm a big volunteer of a lot of things. Um, but I am worried about that. And no, every person that I asked in the immediate zone of our parcel, when they were doing, uh, when they were doing the surveying, when they were, there isn't a single person that was notified by anyone that, oh, yes, they're going to be coming onto your land to be surveying for this project. They're going to be coming onto your land to take pictures. In fact, they're proposing a, a parking lot on a piece of land, uh, directly across from my home that, that the gentleman across the street owns, no one's ever contacted, because I did go, but all of my neighbors say, have you been informed? Have you been informed? So the information that they're putting out sometimes, oh, yeah, everybody knows it. Not everybody reads the papers. And I believe in a lot of the, uh, uh, the zoning regulations, when you have a public hearing, you have to notify people by letter. So that they, and it's a registered letter. That's not happening in this case. So the trail aspect, I'm, I'm not, I'm not against, but you know, when you, when you push it down or you better yet, you, you just feel like you can just go anywhere you want and do whatever you want, and that's what it feels like for me right now. Um, and I challenge that, I say, if you look at the pictures, there's no way that they took those, those pictures without coming onto my front lawn and looking down at it. So with that being said, you know, I would just hope that we would consider the final outcome and, and all of the, the business owners, how many of them have been contacted in the zones that it will end up, not necessarily the, the, the Red Mountain one, but the next, the next level or the next phases. Uh, it's scary to think about it is, because when I saw what was written in some of the proposals, wow, no one ever talked to me. So I appreciate you very much for your time, I know I'm the one named person here, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
My name is Jervon Wicker, I live on two fifty-seven Ole Winston Road. I'm a neighbor of, Mr. Royals, and he is correct about the assessment being incorrect until when they haven't spoken to us. I've waited till this point because I wanted to see if there's anybody from Red Mountain Ave that maybe have, have talked about it and listened to the Trail Network, um, um, presentation, and they didn't say about anybody on Red Mountain that was, you know, for it, um, in their letters, recommendations. That was kind of aside to what I prepared to speak about, but first and foremost, I'd like to thank all of you guys for being on the city council and spending your time to, you know, make Torrington a better and stronger place. Um, I'm here to talk that still nobody has been notified about this upcoming project. I, like I said, I have front of Red Mountain Ave, I've spoken to them, nobody from the city has talked to them about this. So to be clear, then my issue is that there's been lack of notification for the property owners who will be affected. Uh, I've spoke to the city employees and they've said that, oh, they're mostly relying on Torrington Trails Network to notify people about what is going on. And the Torrington Trails Network has had, um, events and, and different things like that. I did go to one of the Torrington Trails Network's events, I had to say, most of them were nice people. Uh, but to nobody's surprise that they're there and they're trying to develop support for the, for the trail network. They're not going out there saying, hey, you have problems with this, this is what you do, you can speak to these people like, oh, sign this form, say they need your support of the network. Uh, that way they can come bring it to you. I also began to realize that if the Torrington Trails Network is the main form of notifying people of, of support or whatnot, and then they come to you, they come here and they say that it's great things, people want it. And I've heard, you know, testimonies about it being great and that people want it. And that's, that's well and good, they're giving you the upside of it. Uh, it's not like, you know, you're going to be a hero for voting for it, it's something that all the community wants. And I know they realized that it's not your fault because this is the information that can be given. That's why I'm here, Mr. Royals is here to let you know that there are other people that have concerns and that the city should reach out themselves to the property owners who will be affected by this so that they can, you know, at least be part of the plan, have their questions, concerns, all that, met and heard. I think that before we spend another dime on this project, we should bring the property owners and let them be involved. They don't want to be involved, that's on them. They don't wanna be involved, that's on them, that's all well and good. But I know that we're spending money right now to work on another project, another part portion of the project. Uh, that's gonna go from the end of my road to to Lowe's. We're spending money on uh, surveys, on on different things like that. But like we've said, no, none of the property owners have been notified to be able to say, hey, this is something that will work for us, won't work for us. As a community, we should come together, let all the property owners know, so that they can, we can talk, we can figure out if there's a viable solution, to figure out this is something that we should uh, continue. I've heard that this has been in the process for a long time, and it has been. But that doesn't make it right that we're like, we have had these plans, and we know that it is going to affect all these property owners, but we have not talked to them, we have not let them know. But meanwhile, we keep spending money on surveys and on the different things. And uh, we fear that we're gonna wake up one day, and there's gonna be people building a walking trail that we had no knowledge about, that we weren't able to be part of, talk about, or anything like that. Uh, speaking with some members of the the community, I I've heard things like, oh, that's just, you know, how Torrenton is behind closed-door deals, and then, you know, the city's just gonna do what they want. And uh, maybe I'm naive, I feel like maybe that was a torrent in the past, but I don't think that's a torrent in the now. I think that uh, we can do better, and we should do better. We should get together with the property owners of the entire trail. And I know that there's a couple of different versions of proposed plans, but either way, if it's something that's being thought about, something that's being uh, proposed, city money or city resources and time has been spent to uh, come up with these plans, these people should at least have a say in it. Or we should decide if it's something viable, something that we should continue on. Like I said, the Torrenton Trails Network, most of them are good people, their main message goes, we want this trail to be longer. The majority of them do not live in any of these areas that are gonna be affected, so of course to them, go ahead and do it. But we shouldn't care to the people who aren't gonna have any skin in the game, that aren't property owners, that aren't paying taxes on those properties. We should let them have their say, so maybe for it, so maybe against it, but we should at least give them the opportunity to come and talk. Uh, like I said, I think that, you know, we're a great community. Uh, like I said, you guys are only can only work with the information that you're given. But I think that we can do better, we should do better, and we should get rid of those notions that some people have about the the community and make them believe that, you know, Torrenton is a great community to live in, that we uh, care about our residents and we care about their opinions. Uh, thank you again for your consideration.
So, public comments, please.
John Kisco, Red Mountain Avenue, good evening. Uh, I understand the trails program, it's a good one, the idea of the trail is good. I also understand the concerns, but my concern is that are we aware that there's a huge asbestos dump on that property from fizzy's? And it's been covered over with dirt, and they planted supposedly uh, vegetation to make impenetrable roots, so that it'll never be a problem. And I'm not sure where the trail is going. Now, on the map that was in the uh, the agenda for this meeting, the the property, there were a couple of bubbles there that uh, that covered, I'm not even sure exactly where that asbestos is. But we really need to stay away from that, because the Venn diagram of people who enjoy using a walking trail, but who are really concerned about asbestos and things like that, probably a huge intersection there, so we just need to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. K. Public comment? Mr. Kendra?
Comcan Duffer, eighteen twenty-one Winston Road. Uh, I wasn't gonna speak, uh, because I uh, kind of used up my time earlier. Uh, but uh, the uh, I could say that uh, I do love, I do live uh, in the same hood with uh, Mr. Royals and Mr. Whitaker. And uh, although there's uh, quite a bit of uh, vegetation between us and and streams. Uh, the uh, so I I'd be a person that would be impacted, uh, but uh, you know, it uh, and it could be, you know, if it if it goes, depending on which way it goes or whatever, it's gonna be uh, maybe a small impact or a large impact. Uh, but uh, I I just like to say that uh, what we're trying to do tonight is uh, is trying to uh, uh, be specific to this little stretch from from about Newfield Road to uh, North Elm, or actually through uh, through uh, Ocean State Plaza to uh, McDermott. And the basic thing about that is uh, that could stand alone for a long, long time before we get involved with o- other things. Uh, so uh, and that would be a super uh, great addition just by itself. The uh, and the thing we're doing tonight is is just trying to try to 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 get additional funding to 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 go further, uh, and and to get this to get this part done. The uh, the uh, uh, it it has been stated previously at the previous council meeting that uh, there's uh, more uh, engagement with people uh, once, you know, once this goes through your, gets your approval, and then it gets uh, approval through the uh, through through the uh, that there's gonna be more opportunity for discussions. I don't uh, I don't feel that uh, it's appropriate to have a meeting to discuss the whole five-mile stretch from Hare's Drive down to uh, you know, uh, downtown someplace to discuss that, because uh, all, there there's so many different different sections that'll take years. Uh, and uh, and then it's possible it may may never, it may never all be connected. Uh, so that's all I wanna say.
Thank you, Mr. Kendra. Yes.
Good evening, I'm Michael Manastrile, I live at one sixty-eight Coffee Road. I hadn't intended to speak tonight, but I wanna make sure the council has a clear idea of what this is about, and maybe maybe you already do, I don't need to be presumptuous. And I wanna start off by saying, I have tremendous respect for Ray and Sherry Royals. They're incredible contributors to this community. I don't really know Mr. Whitaker, uh, and I appreciate their concerns, but their concerns are not really what this project is all about. This project would start off of the Newfield Road and go south, it doesn't go north. So I appreciate their concern that perhaps in the future, there may be uh, an idea, a plan to extend the trail from the Newfield Road then to connect to the Sioux Grossman Trail, but that's not what this is about. This is about applying for a grant to get money to complete a trail over land that the city already owns. It's not a taking of private property, it's city-owned property, and it's going again from Newfield Road south. So I I really do appreciate their concerns, but I feel like that's a concern for another day. Doesn't impact this project, and I fully support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Still a little bit of comments, public comment? Seeing no additional hands being raised, I think we'll move on to our regular agenda, item number four. Uh, I will entertain motion to approve minutes, today, uh, these are very limited meeting minutes from February sixth, twenty twenty-three. Motion.
So.
Second, the council member. Uh, questions or comments under minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I stand. And one exception for the. Moving on to item five, I'll entertain motions to appoint Carl Hunter as a regular member in the ordinance commission for the remainder of the terms that expire on September sixth, twenty twenty-three.
So, second.
Councilman Morgan, second, I can't hear you. Questions in this motion?
Why are you?
Yes.
Is um, Carl, please?
Uh, it's a vacancy. Uh, yeah, we uh, I'm Nate. You're lucky, which vacancy this one is?
Uh, this is, it's been a vacancy for a long time, so I don't know, it was replacing one recently.
This is that one where we have a number of vacancies, and we will try and.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Other questions or comments under motion before I call? Hearing none, I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, item six. I'll entertain motion to approve and authorize an increase of eight hundred ninety-four dollars in funding to the Torrenton Youth Service Bureau. Uh, funding to be paid from our contingency funds, uh, this uh, this motion has previously been approved by the board.
So.
Thank you, I think the council member, and Councilman Minichia. And I do have Kathy Olling from the Youth Service Bureau and Mark Vinnicki. Do you wanna just talk briefly about what the reason for the request for the additional eight ninety-four?
Good evening, my name is Sarah, I'm the executive director of the Torrenton Youth Service Bureau. We currently receive a DCF grant of seventy-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars in order to get that grant entirely, we have to meet the base grant that's comprised of the towns in Harlingen, Dorland. Unfortunately, we don't have a standard that really allows us to provide much support in Dorland and in Harlingen so Torrenton may exist. And with here, we received a supplement which came with a new allocation increasing the requirement for the town match. And that difference is that amount that I asked for the eight hundred ninety-four dollars account. I asked the other towns because I can't stand them, so I'm going to let them support it. Supported in twenty twenty-two on thousand seven hundred and sixty-five in varying degrees and in the Torrenton community, and we have some programs, the homeless program, and I think so, I think we are growing even though we only have two and a half staff. And uh, you know, and I know it's already been approved by the plans department, but not getting this amount of dollars would make me ineligible to receive the entire seventy-one thousand dollars from the DCF grant. Doesn't sound very good, because our overall budget is currently one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We are running on the shooting, but.
I do only add that um, when Kathy came to me to discuss uh, this gap in the funding from the municipalities, this is a match for additional grant funds, which really did not come to their attention until after a project had already been adopted. Otherwise, this would have been included in their original request at the end of June in twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
All right, thank you, no, thank you. All right, questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to item seven. Uh, I will entertain a motion to authorize purchasing meetings to enter into contract for diesel fuel and number two, fuel oil, with a price of no greater than ten percent over give price as presented on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, diesel fuel, as of this date, uh, was two point nine four nine six per gallon from East River Energy of Gilford. And fuel oil number two, there were no bears. So do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Thank you. Yeah, I I heard Councilman Minichia, and I heard second from Councilman Menarow. Uh, questions? We need to see our purchasing agents. I've studied it out and stayed asleep for the meeting. Seeing hearing no questions, I'll call this motion.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Uh, item eight, I'll entertain motion to adopt resolution number one four three dash two three eight, authorizing the mayor to apply for the City Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Recreation Trails Grants in the amount of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars, matched by two hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars in city funds, as further explained in system city measures now date February sixth, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Holden. Number second?
I'm second.
Thank you, Councilman Menarow. And a full couple of discussion, questions, comments? It's Councilwoman Holden.
I do think we need to apply for a grant, I have heard from a number of residents who are certainly excited about this. Um, but I have heard from Mr. Whitaker in the past, and I hear from him now, and and others, and I think we just have to be mindful that we don't turn really good things into bad things by not having the hard conversations and seeking out the people that might be most invested in things. And I, and it doesn't mean that we might not have to make difficult decisions anyway, but I always think it's better to flush out as many conversations as we can and and ask for the concerns. I mean, I am someone that occasionally takes advantage of the trail, and now I'm in the City Council, so I'm ashamed to admit this, but I'm not someone that necessarily knows about all of the things all of the time, because I'm keeping three kids alive, I'm going to work every day. Um, so I think it, you know, there's, we're definitely plenty of meetings, I'm not blaming anybody but me on it, but I think, you know, as many times as we can reach out to folks that are living in the area, even if it is with their property, to have those kinds of conversations, because it is their city and it will affect them. I think that we should just all be mindful of that going forward. I I agree that this is not part of this conversation, this is city-owned property. Uh, this is applying for a grant to go ahead and do it, but um, in the future, I think we all have uh, investment in wanting to make our trails made as fast as they can be, but that will affect more and more people, so we can have as many conversations as we can.
Thank you, Councilwoman, other questions, Councilwoman?
Yes, I I've been involved with the Sioux Grossman since I was in all the state legislatures at the time. You know, the the first grant was approved for on the other trail. I've been in support of it. Um, I do have a question, Rista.
Are you?
Nate?
Yes.
Nate, sorry.
No.
I always remember Rista. I understand you did a really good job together, and I'm a fortunate not in this country or in what parts of attendance that you were able to articulate, and I love the application very well. I did have a question, though, it does say, uh, the land used to part of the proposal applied for four hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred, finalized draft engineering plans, blah, 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 but it does say between Newfield and North Elm on public and private land.
Correct, yes, so uh, where city land currently extends on the old Pan Am Railroad track there, uh, the the preferred route goes through the Ocean State Joblot Plaza, so we would have to acquire a trail easement through that property to connect back up with the city right away on McDermott Ave. We've already been in conversation with the plaza owners, Ocean State Joblot owns that plaza. Um, and so we're talking with their regional property manager to secure that agreement. There are other options that we can explore if that doesn't work out. Um, it does extend all the way to North Elm. Um, the property, the city property, though, that's not preferred group for a number of reasons. Um, and there's other property owners that we could try to secure uh, trail easements on and then have expressed their willingness in the past. So this is just a preferred group, but you know, once we obtain the funding, you know, we'd be opening open to, you know, exploring other routes if we need to. But that's the private, it's a it's a small piece, um, uh, only a three hundred and fifty feet or something like that that would need to be traversed to connect the two pieces of city property.
It's the concern of, you know, property owners that have spoken today. And I know that this is very complicated, because it's also, but the notification, I think, of some of those property owners is concerning to me as well. Um, we own enough property that we wanna know what's coming in and out of our backyards. Um, so uh, in this application, is there any opportunity, because I know it was calling on the Trails Network to to do this communication, but plans to do that, are there?
Yeah, so there's there's two points to that. Um, the first one, uh, in the scoping of the project, as a part of the grant, we've incorporated, you know, neighborhood meetings or outreach, um, especially once we get to the finalization of plans, to try to bring the public in and and even fine fine tune some issues that they might have. Uh, another recent development, uh, last Thursday, there was a meeting that people have been referencing. Uh, another recent development, uh, last Thursday, there was a meeting that people have been referencing that Torington Trails hosted at Bad Dog Brewery. Um, one woman approached me from Red Mountain Ave who was excited about the project, um, especially, um, now what I'm excited about is the connection between Goodwin Street and the plaza, because a lot of folks try to access to go to Price Right to go shopping. It's muddy, the kind of, there's a kind of informal connection there, that's like a muddy bird path that folks use to get down there, and she was very excited to be able to go shopping, actually, you know, get to the plaza in kind of a safe way. Um, she's active in her neighborhood watch, um, or neighborhood meeting organization, uh, and that includes Red Mountain Ave, Goodwin Street, uh, Jarden and uh, Hallard. Uh, so she invited me to come or have a representative of the city come and present the project and solicit input. Um, and so I I shared my contact information, and so we we've already started those conversations, and I think kind of those local level organizations are probably the best way to try to get at folks. Um, because again, a lot of these property owners aren't even adjacent to the trail, there's some large properties that separate them. Really only a few on Goodwin Street and Worton Mills, um, who's already expressed support, so you know, this very limit, limited kind of direct um, uh, abutting and quite a bit of buffer for a lot of those neighborhoods, but we do want to engage them and and that's part of the plan that that, you know, the grant would help fund that engagement.
Thank you. Councilman Minnichia?
If a couple of questions are, uh, maybe do you have any?
Yeah, sure.
Um, just immediately, just to get this off the table, what um, Mr. Royal's concerned, yeah, I guess it was Mr. Royal, no, um, Mr. Cisco, uh, the asbestos issue.
Yes.
So you're aware of that, and what was the response to that?
Uh, well, I will say, so uh, when the property was originally acquired, there had to be a phase one environmental assessment done on the property, and the asbestos was identified there and on the adjacent property. Um, as a part of this grant, we have to identify that we have found those and and work that through with the state, so um, you know, we've been aware of it, it's going to be incorporated into our plans and and, you know, there's enough wiggle room in that trail easement there to or the, I'm sorry, the city-owned property there that, you know, we could avoid it and uh, and, you know, work with the contractor, so I can't say much as not being an environmental engineer myself, but I know we're aware of it, we know, you know, approximately where it is and we're ready to you know, make sure that we're doing best practices to avoid contamination or uh, issues resulting from that.
That's all, well, good, but thi- this seems, is this the final amount that you're asking to develop this, approximately seven hundred thousand and change? Uh, between the grant and the cities?
That's, yeah, that that's what we uh, budgeted that full project.
It is just, you know, having been through a number of, uh, you know, uh, remediation processes in the city over the years, these things always end up being considerably more expensive than originally planned. So when you say you want to work through the state to remediate this issue, well, what does that mean exactly? I mean, how how do I, what assurances can you give the council that we're not going to be on the hook for a substantially bigger cost too?
Um, and I don't, I don't want to speak too much out of turn about the asbestos issue, I don't know if maybe, Rista, do you know more about that?
Yeah, new issue.
Get away.
Thank you. Most of the asbestos is on the apartment property owner, so you may recall a couple, several years ago now, part of this whole program, we hired BSC, we did the rod and study, we did design plans. So we do have an idea, not an idea, we do know where those asbestos dumps are, there is a concept plan that shows where the trail go, that it can avoid those asbestos dumps. You know, we're not at the final design and and any construction projects, there could always be surprises, but we do have uh, very high level, um, and we're not just at the concept stage, we're not at the very beginning, we have surveys, we have uh, design plans, we just need to finalize those designs and uh, we're fairly confident we can avoid all of those asbestos areas, most of them uh, are on the adjacent property, they're not on the piece that we we purchased. What we saw when we got the phase one, were mainly concerned related to um, just having railroad tracks uh, on the site, there's there's not asbestos, and I don't think uh, any of the engineered plans that we have to make show that there's maybe seeing there began by environmental cleanups. Uh, we don't have an LIP, uh, we're not pre- pre- we're not planning a legal action plan, this is really more a trail construction plan, not an environmental cleaner plan where this is telling the cap, that the phase one didn't have more on that level of cleanup, so I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, my my concern again, just considering that, if we take this money, okay, if we get this kind of big this money, what is the, what is the likelihood that at some point EBA or somebody comes in and says, oh, by the way, you better clean this up?
So this money does not do that. We already have that, like, we already purchased the property, we already did this, we already did this, we already did the phase one, we already checked the eligibility.
And we're implementing a use, a usage plan, supplementing the gate changes, correct?
Um, not necessarily, not with these, uh, not with these grants, you know, our trails grants, so the 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 don't the the trail. We're not, the EDA is not going to come in after this and say that we need to do anything above the art, what we already know we need to do. And I would only add that, um, per your point, you know, we've had a number of cleanup grants that we've chased, we've been successful in getting, um, those funds are out there. And the, and I'm not afraid of this, you know, if we find that the only way to get from North Elm Street to uh, to Newfield Road is through one of those asbestos, and we have to go for additional grants for the cleanup of that, that's fair enough. We're not asking the taxpayers to pay for any of that, we won't build this unless we know it's environmentally sound and the people using it are safe.
So I, I get their, I just have, you know, I have concerns, we all know without without bringing up the sort of point, we know how much the remediation of the Benrose property escalated in, you know, over time. Because it's, it's the nature of the business, we have to follow the schemes of contamination, and and they're like, they're very problematic. Having said that, um, you supported this grant, did this disintegrate, I mean, it's a complex thing that you work tonight, get this, you have the big picture in your head, and if you need this, and I do trust um, Judge Magistrali, his judgment unknown for a long time, and and his support, and and uh, uh, for this project, uh, goes along with making full confidence for it, so that's all I've learned about this. Just there.
Councilman Minnichia?
Just one final question to the asbestos. What, uh, how, uh, what's the size of that piece where there's possible asbestos? And approximately, so it's looking at the uh, the distance that we're talking about here, we're only talking about three thousand feet, am I correct?
Yeah.
Thousand two hundred something feet, so how, what's the distance where the asbestos? Approximately?
Uh, well, maybe you can speak to that better, if you know exactly where it is, like in that area, if if it goes that way.
So it's, so the Ocean State Job Lot, uh, was the Fitzgerald, Fitzgerald Casket, that was at one point a superfund site that was cleaned up. And directly behind, like where Ocean State Job Lot is now, um, that general area of the property, directly behind that on the railroad that was a dump site that they had, that they would have to cap and clean up. So it's really just that one section, it's not the whole length. It's it's that one little section, we, you know, it's it's documented very well, indeed, it was, like I said, it was part of the superfund site, it's we know where it is, we know what we can and can't do, it's remediated, so long as we don't disturb it, we're fine, so, you know, the the um, rail line, the easy, the property we purchased is almost a hundred feet wide. So there are some wetlands, but but there's plenty of room for us to put in the trail and not disturb it. Um, so so those are not, there's not unknowns like a hundred Franklin Street, because it was superfund site, it was documented, it's done, and we know what is there. It's a little bit of a different situation, so I I think that's will be fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I never had asbestos cleanup. Uh, it's very different from the GCB cleanups that we had experienced, um, the one hundred Franklin Street property, um, and the use dictates the level of cleanup.
Yeah.
And it cap changes, you know, I mean, is is it better to be capped with an asphalt cap, like? There are so many options for us to mitigate the cost, but again, I feel strongly that um, we already own this property and if we own some of the contamination, maybe we have the responsibility to clean it. And there are funds that will do that, so my my plan would be with this grant, continue on a, you know, unintended path that we already forged here. Um, and the other one, what comes up? It's the right thing to do. Other questions or comments? All right, I'm going to call this motion. Uh, motion made by Councilwoman Morgan, second by Councilwoman Cabanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item nine. And again, thank you for hanging in this late. Um, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute all grant documents for teenage youth assistance to firefighters' grants, AFG awarded by FEMA in the amount of five hundred forty-six thousand three hundred ninety-two thousand seventy-one cents, uh, having um, already been approved by the Board of Public Safety. Councilman, Councilman Morgan? I hear it, Councilman Morgan. All right, questions or comments on this? And um, Chief Boardman, Deputy Chief Tripp are here, they have questions. You think, um, you heard Deputy Chief Tripp last time we met about this award and the great work that he did?
This was the grant that was approved in a meeting prior to this.
For safety, I had a special meeting at six o'clock.
Yeah, I would say, listen to that.
Yeah. Right, I'll call this motion all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the following budget transfer and amendment required for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. As further described in City Council's letter dated September sixteenth, twenty-three, uh, having previously uh, been approved by the Board, thanks. So, uh, so everybody, Councilman Morgan, the Councilman Morgan, let's move to the now, questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Oliver, I will um, take this in two parts, eleven A, um, entertain a motion to appoint the light task force as the lead of the Integrand Global Airport Advisory Committee um, to review all applications and make funding recommendations to the city council, as further explained, and the economic development directors can update it for a fourth day.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Minnichia. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven B, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter the Malheynum of understanding regarding the lack of vacant program with Torington Area Health District as proposed in the draft, uh, and will be dated January thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Cabanero, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item twelve, I think there's no strong comment. Okay, this is. Item twelve, uh, A, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the chore service contract with WC AAA with extensions from October one, twenty twenty-three to September thirty, twenty twenty-five.
So.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, and Assistant Councilman Morgan, make a motion, Councilman Oliver. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve B, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the transportation contract with WC AAA with extensions from October one, twenty twenty-three, which is September thirty, twenty twenty-five.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Second, Councilman Minnichia, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Various items, item twelve C, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to apply for the transportation grant by three one zero with CT Department of Transportation as described in the writer's support letter dated February sixteen, twenty twenty-three. I hear, uh, the motion is made by Councilwoman Morgan, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Minnichia, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D, four, twelve D, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract with WC AAA naming the nutrition department as the elderly nutrition program provider for the Litchell Hills area as described in the writer's support letter dated November sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, second by Councilwoman Cabanero, uh, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to release the assistant corporation council memo dated November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Minnichia. And second by Councilwoman Morgan, questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, now I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize tax refunds and gain listings as H one one, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Morgan?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Morgan. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Items fifteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector to authorize the shore use refunds and give it and list it as H one one, twenty twenty-three.
Over.
Second, Councilman Morgan.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Morgan, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, now I'll entertain a motion to solicit business twenty-five minutes.
Okay.
Question one. Second by Councilwoman Morgan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two, the wrong, and that, Mr. Cisco?
That's the difference.
Thank you. And Deputy Boardman?
Uh, I'll just introduce myself on the board, uh, officially, and to thank you all for your, for the assistance.
Deputy Chief Tripp?
What's up, man?
Thank you. Rest of the, anything else? Nate Estate. Uh, Carol, I didn't know, see, from the, sorry, moving to item seventeen, I'll entertain a motion to solicit business by mayor and members.
So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Morgan. Second, and second by Councilwoman Morgan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, starting to the, uh, adjournment, anything you're seeking, Councilman, comment?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan.
I'm looking at your address.
Councilman Morgan?
Uh, yes, I have a couple. Try it, um, back to the tree ordinance, just a couple of my thoughts to you. Yep. Let's look at, yeah, I think this is a good one.
He's not a George. Good. You're right, they're all that way.
Um, just kind of two questions, like, I think it's long too, I have, actually, really just one. Um, I first knew that there was a tree warden and tree pools when the school building project was happening, which I'm sure there's not a lot of large-scale city property projects, because I might have been the first time really to talk about it on such a large scale, and I completely understood, like, every tree that gets removed needs to get re-plant, and that all makes sense, and that the city needs to start to be involved in that. Um, but there was a delay, like, there were so many weeks of getting everything approved, and it looked like everybody was ready to go, and I think there was a breakdown in communication maybe between the contractor and the city, because kind of some of the first calls I got, I was like, we're moving into that phase and starting to move dirt around, and they were sitting for almost like a week waiting for the tree warden to approve the under trees that had to come down, which at the time I didn't know was doing, Mr. Zeroff, like, who's the tree warden? Um, so I don't know if there's something we can do or maybe put in the ordinance that there's maybe some closer connections during the, all of the permitting, so that that stuff can finally get ironized, so there's not unnecessary delays, it's still a week on the school project. Really, I mean, we're still behind six days, so maybe that's a week for all of us, but, um,
It's the tree wardens.
It might, it might be.
The tree, the tree wardens.
I don't think it is, I think it's a lot, but there, you know, there still was a week in the beginning, so I know, we're not going to have a lot of large-scale opportunities like that, but it seems like when there were weeks of permits, conversations between the city, maybe they could have talked about the trees.
Um, yeah, just so, in regards to, uh, is it tree wardens? Yeah, there were, there was, um, several iterations of the landscaping plan that they had to submit and redone. Um, I bought the site, uh, to some additional trees that were identified that needed to be removed. Um, there were some dead ashes that were not originally on their plan to be removed, so those were included in the plan to be removed, they're kind of on the, um, it was like, I don't know, through the side of the property. Um, so there was, um, we're not saying that there were delays, there were, um, additional
Would not say that there were delays, there were uh additional circumstances that required additional uh landscaping plans. Uh yeah, once I received the permit, I'm not with uh O N G and. We processed that permit one day, once the the plans and the replanting plans as well as the removal plans were finalized. So would you try and do try and turn around for a quick?
I agree to our motivation.
Cause I wanted off the desk.
I would add though, also, in May, long before it was shown on the ground. The communication to the architect at the time was, and don't forget, you have to come and apply for a permit.
Right.
And they didn't. So it was very late, they said, oh, wait a minute, we need to pull a permit, what are we doing next? And yes, it was application. So there was, uh when you say breakdown of the mission, communication to the architect in May was, and you forget, we're about to do this. And then I think it was in July.
Yeah, I I don't think, you know, I I think we communicated very early with them, uh there was just some reiterations uh on the site. Identifying um some additional trees, identifying what they, what trees they needed to protect.
Mm-hmm.
Um and how they needed to protect.
But to your, to the question, and I think that was really the question, was how do we write the ordinance that this didn't happen quickly? You know, if it's city property, you know, do we have to wait? Because by statute, we have to wait.
Yes, so that's part of that, so once the trees are posted, um unless they are hazardous to you or a nuisance tree. Um they have to be posted for ten days.
Right, just that state statute?
It is a state statute that before this, we can remove a tree that is a healthy tree. It has to be posted for ten days. And then if somebody objects the removal, then we have to have a hearing on that. Uh we did not have to have a hearing in this case, but it was posted for ten days. The landscaping plan was posted out front of the school project. For that ten day period, and then on the eleventh day, they started removing the trees.
I did know that once you were back, um. But you can appoint some deputy wardens, right? I don't know, are there any appointed right now?
I have one, two, three deputy.
Thank you, Mary. Just as part of this conversation, going all the way back to the regional comments, when the harbors, I can say Mr. Blackford, second.
Uh just to address this this concern, which was, you know, an intelligent question, and I don't have an answer to that.
Is this the traditional uh responsibility under cities to act? Does the department need the tree warden?
So the 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 public works director is the city tree warden by city charter title line.
Yeah, it it it's that's by state or by city charter system?
By the city of Torrance Charter.
My my question is, yeah, is this is this common throughout state of?
It's fairly common, majority of municipalities. It's either the public works director, um there are a few municipalities that appoint a separate tree warden.
Yeah.
Uh but the majority of.
This is what I mean, is this the best?
The Tree Warden Association.
Right, but is this a conversation worth having going forward? Is the department the best? It it does feel like, well, I'm conflict of interest, I still don't quite exactly understand.
Right.
I I'm in terms of efficiency, this seems like a very.
So just as a reminder, if you're talking about changing our charter, that would have to be as I find folks.
Kind of what we're coming up to in lectures, that would be my point, uh and I'm not sure.
We would have to appoint a charter, it would be a missing today.
I have no doubt in this, I I I was just asking the question that was raised earlier, that it seems to be a reasonable question. Is this the most efficient way for the city department to be dealing with this moment?
Yeah, I mean, some uh community communities do have um separate. Though actually can appoint an outside harbors. And to be the tree warden, um but as I mean, it here is by city charter that the public works director is, so. Is that a conversation worth having? That's a logic question.
Well, to me, I'm not sure, again, I don't understand conflict of interest specifically, but what I do would concern myself in efficiency. Is this the most, I mean, is there a more efficient way to do this? So I'm asking, I don't know if this is a, if this is a big time drain on your department, if not, this will run, I don't care.
I mean, we have a regular tree management program that, you know, through public works.
Yeah.
Um we have. We are in the process of identifying, so. A number of our trees are in our G I S database, we've identified, we've numbered the trees. So like, you know, everything we did on Warner Street, Main Street, Franklin Street are parked, all of those trees are in G I S. Um so we do have an identification process.
Yes.
And, you know, we do rely a lot on the public to bring some trees to our attention, if they're roadside hazards or. Um so it's kind of very cooperative, but we do have an active program. And then we work very closely with Eversource as well in their tree trimming and pruning program. Um you know, I mean, even they have to get a permit from us to remove trees in the right ways, just like everybody else would. To remove or prune or uh trees in in the following ways.
Uh I again, you know, in in terms of city priorities and things that are, this is not a front burner issue, but. Uh if it if it's something that merits consideration, please bring it up at appropriate times, as long term, this is the best way to be handling these issues.
Right.
Alright, thank you, Grant.
Yeah, just one. Who's in the floor is still here. Uh but do all of you have to go through some sort of training? Are you all arborists or is there this?
No, we're not arborists, we do have to go through uh training uh some put on by the university of Connecticut through the Tree Warden's Association.
Oh, thank you.
To be certified tree wardens.
Um thanks. Well, actually, maybe not, uh we did all receive this, um yes, uh from um Candy Perez and her family. And she did reach out to me, I don't know if she has anybody else, um her. Uh father lives on Tracy Avenue, and she had found out by talking to someone in public works, she's happened to be working down there. On the road project that they were taking the sidewalk out that is existing on Tracy Avenue and replacing it with grass. I don't know if it was part of my time, if there was a bullet hearing about it or what that is tied up in, but. Um she did raise some pretty valid concerns about, um you know, it's kind of a busy end of that street. So people do walk down there, so eliminating the sidewalks from both sides doesn't seem like a great idea to me, but.
Right.
No, I don't know how we got here, or is there any way to?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we can, I just received a copy of that, and I will speak with the engineer. Uh city engineer is in regards to what his, the overall plan is, doesn't, you know, I believe it does comply with the sidewalk master plan. Uh so we slated to remove. One side of the sidewalks, you know, as you recall, we can, we did that on the north end reconstruction projects. Uh and then, you know, there was kind of this upheaval at the beginning, but then people kind of found out that they. It didn't work too well for them, um unless you had sidewalks, cause then you had to leave.
Right, but now it's not gonna be any sidewalks, I don't think, by this plan, maybe you take out, because I think there only are ones on one side, um.
Yeah, that's um, yeah, I will have to get back to you on that after I speak.
I just wanted to. So I didn't know, I don't know if it was part of, if it was part of a master plan, was there originally like public comment on that, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, that is presented, there was uh public hearing on it, but that's going back some time.
Yes, that's what somebody said, maybe ten years ago?
I think during my administrations, certainly within the past nine years, and I remember that.
Been like. Yeah, my my. A year or so.
The engineer at the time had the whole plan that spanned the entire back lawn there. To show where the sidewalks were going to be and where they were not going to be.
Um maybe it was, but she thought it wasn't hard, maybe maybe the angle was, you know, thank you.
When when is that slated to get done?
Um I don't know that particular schedule, just I I have to get back.
Is that like? This summer, not like.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's, they were scheduled to finish up the south end, Palmer Bridge Street, they have a couple of other streets in the area. So some other utility work that was delayed, um in last fall, so the south end should be finished this way.
Thank you. Sure, okay, Councilwoman Venetia, anything?
Uh no, none.
I just want to kind of think of the council board's support of the ordinance that we cast tonight and will take heed to the comments for um. The other ordinance and welcome any of you to come to the ordinance committee meeting, which I think we had scheduled.
Yes.
Correct, yes, yes, we we have other issues, you know, shopping carts, it's been a while, so. And the Fair Housing Commission as well, so um it's becoming a pretty active committee and, you know, we love the registration of the council members that we want to attend. Um but I do want to really make a comment about the um. Ranger's Department, Public Works, um and our police department in relation to their relationship with the ordinance committee. We don't move forward without, you know, their involvement, and they don't typically bring things to the ordinance committee if it's not. You know, relevant or pertinent um to the time. Like, I would love to look at the ordinances that we have and start taking some mock books, um we got that, right? Um because there's some very old ordinances that, you know, as we found out with the food truck, you know, that. Um that we really need to, so we haven't really gotten to that part of the work of the ordinance committee, but I would love to get there at some point. But I do want to thank both the Department of Public Works, right, and that's all the meetings as well, and. Sergeant Foltis, who really hears complaints and and brings them as long as they're fired or brought in. Are. I'm trying to keep, when I'm calling chief, but the deputy chief, um Tripp, who is kind of. That's all, want to give a positive ending.
I appreciate it, because I I feel like I'm always hammering the strength inside, and you're having all the information I'm asking.
You know.
Remember, you've been teaching. Uh didn't that, and I honestly, but the concerns I have is like one more duty, I mean, the uh amount of uh.
Functions that he has as the director of public works is huge. And I'm saying that knowing the budget season is coming up and I'll be the first to say, uh no, but. Uh it's it's a really very active department of the work, so, as well as all our departments, but he's supposed to have to know the work.
Councilwoman Cameron.
Uh no.
Okay, moving into item number eight, we now entertain a motion to open the public to comment.
So, second.
Second, the Councilwoman, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council on agenda items only, that needs to be discussed as an agenda item? Comments from the panel? Mister Blackman?
Yeah, I'll make this one about as quick as I possibly can for anything. Um it's just wonderful to be able to be here tonight and have this conversation with anyone, with all of you. And if there's anything that you need from me moving forward. As someone who has spent their entire adult life focused on one specific career in healthcare and conservation. Uh please feel free to reach out, I'll leave my cards with you guys. It's nice to see you dressed here in a public forum, and it's for everybody's benefit and safety and wellbeing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Blackman. Right, when moving to item nineteen, you're being offered a business report, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Councilwoman Venetia. Seconded by Councilwoman Cameron, all in favor?
Aye.